That's it for this episode of Inside Santa Barbara. If you have any questions or comments about the show, you can give us a call at 564-5311. If you missed something, not to worry, you can watch the show online at santabarbara.ca.gov/citytv. I'm your host, Becky Davis, and remember to get involved inside Santa Barbara.
Oh, no.
Hi. Oh, honey, how thoughtful of you.
You know me, plants don't need as much water in the fall and winter, so I decided to get up early and turn it down.
You're bringing your golf clubs to my mother's?
Yeah.
Take control of your controller. Turn it down.
Minutes away. Hours of fun. Enjoy a taste of Santa Barbara. Experience the romance. Playing near you.
I grew up here. I've made memories here, and I love being able to drive around knowing that this is my community. I'm helping my community.
We care, and we want to make this community a better place.
This career is for someone who wants to be challenged deep down inside to better a community.
It's the best job in the world. It really is. It's like a dream come true. Join your home team.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call the special city council meeting of May 23rd, 27th into order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank you for your coordination for the later start time so we could attend Mr. Michael Tobes's memorial, and I want to thank staff. There was an incident here earlier at City Hall, and you all did your jobs very well, so I want to acknowledge that moving forward. So with that, if we can have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dominguez.
Here.
Councilmember Rouse.
Here.
Councilmember Hart.
Here.
Councilmember Murillo.
Here.
Mayor Schneider.
Here, on item one.
Item one, proclamation, National Public Works Week, May 21st through 27th, 2017.
All right. Public Works builds and maintains infrastructure for the city from the airport to the waterfront to the street, sidewalks, bridges, water and wastewater systems, and much more. And Public Works resources and services are integral to our everyday lives as the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities, infrastructure, and services. Public Works is resolved to preserve and improve facilities and services initiated by prior generations, and the community supports the maintenance and upkeep of city infrastructure to maintain and enhance our beautiful built environment. The strong commitment by the city's hardworking Public Works staff bridges the gap created when national and local funding falls short in meeting the needs of public infrastructure. And Public Works will continue to coordinate and collaborate to deliver quality resources and services for the residents and visitors. So therefore, I, Helene Schneider, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby proclaim May 21st through 27th, 2017 as National Public Works Week. I call upon all residents and civic organizations to recognize the issues involved in providing our Public Works and to recognize the contributions made daily by the department, its staff, to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Thank you each and every one of you in the whole department for all the work that you do. So thank you very much. (APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mayor Schneider and council members. It's an honor for me to be here today to accept this proclamation on behalf of the hardworking staff of Public Works. This year's National Public Works theme is "Public Works Connects Us." Our city's infrastructure connects each of us every day. The Public Works staff provide vital water, wastewater, transportation, and fleet services to our community. From the time you brush your teeth in the morning until you're washing the evening dishes, we're there to support you. We run 24-hour-a-day, 365-day-a-year operation. We support emergency services such as fire and police through maintenance of vital communication systems, water systems, roadways, and vehicles. We think of ourselves as a vital underpinning of the community. With me today are a few of the people who keep your infrastructure operating. While we are challenged by a lack of resources to adequately repair our roads, buildings, and other infrastructure, we are not challenged by the quality of our staff. The people who are joining me at the podium today are standing up to represent Public Works because they were selected as Employees of the Month during the past year for going above and beyond. They are Andrew Grubb, project engineer; Brad Clinzing, who is currently a supervising engineer but was a project engineer when he was recognized; Carson Woolert, project engineer II in engineering; Chris Mendoza, fleet services technician; Dina Hoffenberg, water resources specialist in water conservation and water supply; Laura Yanez, project engineer in engineering; Neville Smetta, administrative assistant in the Streets' Operation Infrastructure Group; Sarah Clark, parking resources specialist with Downtown Parking; Thomas Flinty, fleet services technician I with our fleet department division; Tyler Mata, water resources specialist with Water Conservation. We have three who were unable to join us. Victor Ayala, an electrician with Facilities; Ribbon Gattiras, custodian with Facilities; and Tina Diaz, administrative specialist with Fleet who's at a ukulele recital.[388.12][388.12](LAUGHTER). Thank you for recognizing the importance of Public Works to our day-to-day lives and in connecting the community and allowing it to thrive.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any changes to the agenda? No? Okay, public comment. We have a few speaker slips here. We have two minutes at the podium. We will start with Clint Orr, followed by Noel McGivern.
Hello again, Mayor Schneider and city council. This is my fourth week in a row talking about, of course, the need for country music and dance. I mean, a place for our kids at the airport. And it's coming along well. My vision is, at the airport, is progressing rapidly. I should have actually letters of intent to lease from Guitar Center, Boot Barn, Chucky Cheese, Coffee Bean, Enterprise Rental Car, and Penske by... You're sitting down? June 1st. Okay, so this, I'm not messing around here. I'm meeting with Wells Fargo. I know everybody hates Wells Fargo, but they were here first, and they had the stagecoach through Santa Barbara, and they're going to be the sponsor of this place. So it'll likely be Wells Fargo circa 1880, and those are the six tenants that will likely sign letters of intent by June 1st. So it's on, like Donkey Kong, okay? So just keep that in mind, and leave... Everybody should leave Wells Fargo alone, except for the one percent on top. I go to Milpus and Mason, there's no crooks there. You know, I go here in Anacapa, I don't see any crooks there, okay? I'm not saying that they didn't do bad things, but leave the working stiffs out of that. Thank you.
Noel McGivern will be followed by Daniel Knapp.
Good afternoon. My name's Noel McGivern. I work in the Santa Barbara Unified School District. I was born in Santa Barbara.
Why don't you pull that mic close?
I know, I ought to know better. In 1961, I was born here in St. Francis Hospital. This is Schumash land, as well as everyone else's land, it seems like. We've got to remember, there were people here before Wells Fargo, and I'm here to implore you to divest the city of banks like that, the ones who invest in, like, the Dakota Access Pipeline. I met these Lakota people. I've been to Pine Ridge. I've been to the Arizona desert where the Navajo people can't drink the water because of uranium and mining poisons. They don't have a way to go haul their water. They don't have the money. In Pine Ridge, where my relatives live, they can't drink the water there either, okay? It's got uranium in it too. The yellow cake, you know, they knew better than to touch that stuff. So that's tragic, and I know we can be joining Seattle, Santa Monica, Los Angeles is going to think about it. We're hoping to get New York, everybody to really... I took my money out of Bank of America. I put it in the... Luckily for me, I'm a teacher, so I put it in the credit union. It's been working out really well. So basically, for the next two minutes, I would think it would be a real shame if we lost these beautiful people, these Lakota people. And here's a song to encourage them. It goes... (SINGING) Unchi maca yu huni apo, mini wichoni wakon yelo, d a p l i la si chaylo, oya table hech yapo. And there's a lot more. It can go on for a long time, this song.
Thank you very much.
The song means...
Your time's up. Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, it just means water is sacred, and, you know...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Daniel Knapp will be followed by Lauren Manuel, I think.
Hello, Madam Mayor and council. I thought I'd come back today and keep an eye on things that are going on around town. I still want to say that I think pitting people against one another for their financial station in life is really counterproductive. I've lived here 39 years, and I've watched this go up and down and all around, and, you know, if you want in an elitist community, why not just build a gate around it and charge admission? I said that 25 years ago, same place. And the cost of antagonizing people, although the police department lately has really been doing a good job, much improved, a lot less hassle, and they deal promptly with problems on State Street. And I haven't been harassed that much, but the fact of the matter is, is that there's a... The worst housing shortage in California history is taking place right now, and there's an epidemic in this country, if you haven't noticed, of socioeconomic depravity. The difference between those that have and those that don't is worse than it was in Rome. And, you know, you can hide from the facts, but the economy is pretty simple. It's arithmetic. And if you make this much and you've got to pay that much, something's going to happen. So when people run around willy-nilly, using a necessity like housing as, you know, bargaining chips on a gambling table, I take ambridge with that. And so, you know, breeding hatred between groups of people is really not good. I don't think, you know, that that's what we need. What we need are solutions, and those solutions are very difficult, I realize. But the state of California is in trouble, and I'm running out of places to hide.
Thank you.
I was born in this state.
Thank you. Lauren, I think it's Manuel, followed by Phil Walker.
Hello, Mayor Schneider and city council. I had the opportunity to talk at the Financial Committee earlier today, and I just want to quickly go over some of these same things again. The city currently has held at Goldman Sachs $250,000, at Union Bank $4 million, and at Wells Fargo, we hold a $2 million note. I think a lot of people would like to see those funds be pulled out of those banks over their involvement in the Dakota Access Pipeline, and really to set forward a socially responsible investment policy to ensure that banks who are invested in the degradation of our environment and the place that we live no longer get to use city funds. If you take a look at the city's current investment policy, in the mission statement, it says right there that it is the policy of the city to invest public funds in a manner that will provide maximum security, adequate liquidity, and sufficient yield. Security comes first, and I think that definitely bleeds over into security in the environment and the places that we live, and in the solidarity statement that was passed in November, I think we can also expand that security into the rest of the nation for sure, and really it should mean the rest of the globe, as the air we breathe, the land we live on, and the water that we all need to drink should be kept secure. And right there in the mission statement, that means it comes before liquidity, before yield. Though liquidity, thank you for keeping that around, because it will surely aid in divestment from these banks.
Thank you. Phil Walker will be followed by Gabriel.
Excuse me. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. You know the city tree crew parks department? They're spot on, they're sharp. I want to give them my thanks on quinientos. We've been swarmed by these persistent winds, fronds falling, and I went in quarter to four on Thursday, and by noon time Friday, they were all gone, picked up. So people have to be aware with what I'm starting to feel and see and whatever else. Things are browning off fast, and it's going to be, I think, a heavy fire season. I sense it. I saw it in the palm fronds, they're dried out, they crumble almost, even though they've been up on the tree. Okay, one other quick thing. I got into the tail end of the Amgen tour aftermath. I was moving from west to east on Cabrillo right before Stern's War. There were cones, and it was semi-chaotic. Cones were being knocked over. People were trying to get onto State Street going north and going across the temporary fencing, the contractor's fencing lash. There was a lady actually bouncing in and off of it into my traffic lane, so I actually had to go into the oncoming lane to avoid hitting her. There's no pedestrian markings or anything there. I don't know what... I think she was under the influence. But at Cabrillo and Garden, there was an officer taking a time-lapse photo op with his iPhone of one lonely barricade there. I didn't know what was going on. Naturally, a barricade means do not enter, but it was clear sailing all the way down from west to east and east to west. I could see cars coming on down by the red line, or, excuse me, the double tree. And why the officer just, you know, I was in it, I'm sure, in his camera viewfinder, why he just didn't go like this to the curb and turn me around? But when I was done with the citation, two moving violations, the officer just let me go on my merry way. Supposedly, the road was closed, so I don't understand that one. I'm confused. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabriel will be followed by Chacho Burr.
Hello. I just want to remind you all that our solar ice caps are melting. New York, Miami, Florida, Japan, Philippines will all be underwater by years 2050 or expected. That is to say that our global climate is changing due to human-induced activities on this planet since the Industrial Revolution, and I think it is important for us and you all, people of power in government positions, to do your best as representatives of the community and the people and the republic to divest. Divest from companies, divest from banks, divest from groups, corporate interests that are involved in human rights violations, are involved in offshore drilling, fracking, any types of forms that you feel that we feel and we can work with you all are creating, you know, vast changes in our climate, in our world. And it's basically what I want to say, it's important to do that, and I'll leave it out there. Thank you.
Chacho Burr will be followed by Bonnie Raisen.
When I started this, I'm also here to reiterate that point. I would like to ask and hold you accountable, because in November, you passed a resolution standing in solidarity with indigenous peoples, and yet, as a city and as representatives of a city that stands and sits on the bones of indigenous people, you really haven't done anything. So I would just like to ask that, as a city and as representatives of a city who claims to be so progressive and so liberal, right, and so modern, to divest, to divest from Wells Fargo, Union Bank, and Goldman Sachs, and any other bank that contributes to human rights violations. Now, that may not be of relevance to your life, it may not be important to you as an individual, you may not agree with my beliefs, but this is much larger than you. See, I come to you as an educator, someone who teaches young people how to be leaders, how to make changes without the need to sell out and to, you know, follow the rules, the rules that have been put before you by people who had limits. I teach them that there can be a sustainable world. I believe that Santa Barbara could be self-sustaining within the next few years. Maybe not in your lifetime, but that's okay, because you don't get to reap the benefits of the work we're putting in. As a city that claims to be so progressive, so liberal, so forward-moving, I don't see it, and I was born here. So I urge you, I suggest, actually, no, actually, I want you to divest, whether it be as an individual or as an entity that represents a city like Santa Bruta. Gracias.
Bonnie Raisen will be followed by Emiliano Campobello.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and city council, and Bonnie Raisen. The sales tax, the one cent sales tax, is a done deal. I understand that. I just want to remind everyone that when the county passed a quarter cent sales tax increase that was supposed to fix roads and infrastructure, it really didn't happen. So I know that you can't control every, all the behavior of our Public Works Department, and they're going to do what they feel is best to do, but I'd like to also mention, and maybe I kind of borrowed this from someone, but I think the public needs to understand each department a little better and how they are spending our money. I've sat through finance committee meetings, and with all due respect, it's very difficult to understand. And when you couple pensions and salaries in with that, it becomes even more difficult. And it sounds very often like there's a lot of weight on the side of the pensions and the increase in those and the salaries. So that leaves the general public then wondering, well, how much of our money that we spend is really going to go towards infrastructure? I'm concerned about that. Also, the outside studies that you spend money on, I'm thinking that there must be someone, you have over 1,000 city employees in Santa Barbara, there's got to be someone or one group in each department that can do their own study and their own survey. That, I think, would be reassuring to someone like myself who questions how our money is spent. So thank you very much.
Emiliano Campobello will be followed by Joseph Bobrow.
Thank you. Yes, it's good to see you all again. It's Emiliano Campobello. Campobello is an Italian pronunciation, Campobello.
Thank you.
Spanish, you're welcome. I brought a gift for those of you who I did not see at the earlier meeting at Finance Committee. This time, it's not a bottle of water with oil in it, but it's some sacred white sage for Mr. Hotchkiss, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Rouse, and Kathy Murillo, if possibly you could give these to them. It's white sage from this land used for prayer and, right on, Jason, for blessings. You know, one of the things that I'm learning here in these meetings, and I've never been as politically involved as I am right now, and it's really beautiful just from the Finance Committee, is to learn what a great job you all are actually doing. It's always so easy to pinpoint something that needs to be fine-tuned or people will have objections with, but in this whole divestment process, as I learned today, it's a relatively small amount of the city's investments that are, according to some of what we're talking about, that is objectionable. And so I just want to recognize the fact that so much is going right, and I really appreciate the general mindset that's here. And now what we're doing is just trying to get everything as much in alignment as possible in our ask for divestment from these different banks and institutions, and also recognizing the fact that many of these places that we're invested in, we were kind of grandfathered into. It wasn't a decision to invest in companies that were making these kind of decisions, but we had investments there, and then we become aware of these decisions, these policies that they have. So I want to come across as being supportive of our city council and our mayor and the decisions and the policies that you've been instituting for our city, and recognize that it is a very progressive direction that we're moving forward in. Did my two minutes just end?
Just ended.
Okay, well, thank you very much. That was the main part of what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. God bless you all.
Joseph Bobrow will be followed by Barbara Cota Lopez, and the final speaker will be Ernestine DeSoto. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody. As a Zen Buddhist roshi, I spent five days at Standing Rock in November as part of a group of almost 600 clergy from around the world who were assembled there to support the water protectors. And one of the ceremonies that was performed was the burning of something called the Doctrine of Discovery. The Doctrine of Discovery was an edict put out by the Pope before Columbus decided to set forth and conquer. And basically, it said that anything that the white man found belonged to the white man. And that was used throughout our history to allow our country as well to subjugate the Native American peoples. So what I want to appeal to you is on the basis of a moral imperative, that we sit here in Santa Barbara relatively comfortable, but on the rez, the people are not so comfortable, and they're not really able to partake of the clean water, the clean air, and the earth that we have here. I think as we grow as human beings and as entities representing human beings, we realize our interconnectedness with all creatures, and that's a moral imperative that supersedes financial investments. So I want you each to check your conscience and check the degree to... It's always so easy to pinpoint something that needs to be fine-tuned or people will have objections with. But in this whole divestment process, as I learned today, it's a relatively small amount of the city's investments that are, according to some of what we're talking about, that is objectionable. And so I just want to recognize the fact that so much is going right. And I really appreciate the general mindset that's here. And now what we're doing is just trying to get everything as much in alignment as possible in our ask for divestment from these different banks and institutions, and also recognizing the fact that many of these places that we're invested in, we were kind of grandfathered into. It wasn't a decision to invest in companies that were making these kind of decisions, but we had investments there, and then we become aware of these decisions, these policies that they have. So I want to come across as being supportive of our City Council and our mayor and the decisions and the policies that you've been instituting for our city, and recognize that it is a very progressive direction that we're moving forward in. Did my two minutes just end?
Just ended.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. That was the main part of what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. God bless you all.
Joseph Bobrow will be followed by Barbara Cota Lopez, and the final speaker will be Ernestine De Soto. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody. As a Zen Buddhist roshi, I spent five days at Standing Rock in November as part of a group of almost 600 clergy from around the world who were assembled there to support the water protectors. And one of the ceremonies that was performed was the burning of something called the Doctrine of Discovery. The Doctrine of Discovery was an edict put out by the Pope before Columbus decided to set forth and conquer. And basically, it said that anything that the white man found belonged to the white man. And that was used throughout our history to allow our country as well to subjugate the Native American peoples. So what I want to appeal to you is on the basis of a moral imperative that we sit here in Santa Barbara relatively comfortable, but on the res, the people are not so comfortable, and they're not really able to partake of the clean water, the clean air, and the earth that we have here. I think as we grow as human beings and as entities representing human beings, we realize our interconnectedness with all creatures. And that's a moral imperative that supersedes financial investments. So I want you each to check your conscience and check the degree to which you actually feel connected with the first peoples in this country, and make a decision about divestment based not only on money but on morality. Thank you.
Barbara Cota Lopez.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Barbara Cota Lopez. I'm Barbara Anjo Alder Schumash. I'm also the granddaughter of Juan Cota. The reason that I'm here is to share with you a story very quickly that when the oil spill happened at Refugio, our Schumash, we were there. We were there while they cleaned up, and three of my children didn't even think about not going. They left. My concern at first, because I'm the mother, was that the oil that they were going to be breathing in. But because they knew that they were there to protect and preserve, my mother said to my son, "You're going?" And he said, "Uh-huh." But then she said, "Our ancestors are there." And without hesitation, he left and he went. So we are very, very much involved in the community, not only on my Schumash side, but because my grandfather was Juan Cota and he dances, and he celebrates this city as we celebrate both cultures. So keeping that in mind, thank you for listening to me. You are doing a great job. I know when I get up, I'm not breathing smog. Thank you.
Mr. Soto.
It's a good thing I'm last because I'm not so eloquent or nice. I'm Ernestine Ignacio De Soto, daughter of Mary J. Ye, where most of the history and language is from, also the granddaughter of Lucrecia Ignacia, who had the Alacon, which is the Indian orchard, the ranch at the bottom of San Marcos Pass, and the great-granddaughter of Luisa Ignacia, who is going to be going up in the Marriott, just a little payoff to, you know, build over our remains. And I could go on. Well, the great-great-grandma, Marie Ignacia, who always gets graffiti every month or so, and that's who I am. So what I wanted, I have a lot of things to say. And like I said in UCSB, I had 10 minutes to describe the decolonization in, over 225 years ago. So I don't know how well I can do in two minutes. I'm not happy with the handicap parking, which has nothing to do with this, or the bathrooms, including yours, and the natural cafe. And also, I hate guns because people are not responsible by that. They're not responsible for their behaviors, either deliberately or mentally. Also, I'm here for the same thing everybody's talking about, divesting, and for my brothers, the Lakota. They're not of my tribe, but I believe all Indian tribes are one. And so what you have to realize, water is here for a reason, and it's sacred, aside from sacred, having been Christianized by the Franciscans here. It's also our baptism. It's also our nuptial that you are all carried in, water. When the water breaks, you come. And we're also made up of 70%, 80% water. So, and our health depends on water. It's the cheapest medicine, well, not anymore, but it is, was, the cheapest medicine you're ever going to get, also to make your medications, to mix your medications, your IVs, your hydrations, et cetera.
Thank you very much.
So divest.
Thank you.
Lest you die with us in 2050.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Onto the consent calendar. There are no items to read. We have a request to speak for items eight and 10 from Anna Marie Gott. What I'd like to do is just combine the two. If you'd like up to four minutes for that, that would be fine, instead of coming and going and coming and going. And then we have requests to speak for item seven as well. But let's do, since I just called you up, Ms. Gott. And why don't we just actually, there are two notices of dates for appeals on, one's an Architectural Board of Review denial of application for short-term rental conversion, and item eight was the denial of proposed short-term rental conversion from Historic Landmarks Commission. So go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember.
I'm here today to ask you on behalf of myself and Allied Neighborhood Association for three things. You will be scheduling this meeting, or actually two meetings, for these conversions that had received denials. I am asking that you have a City Council meeting in the evening at 6:00 PM so that our residents can actually attend. Most cannot attend because they are at work during the general council meetings. The next thing that I'm asking is that we actually look at the project description. If you take a look at the project description on page two, you will notice that it uses the word short-term vacation rental or vacation rental. We don't really have that defined anywhere in the city's ordinances, and I'm asking that you actually direct our city staff to create a description that will fully describe the actual conversions, that they are removing a residential home from the housing stock, that they are turning it into commercial use, and that they are actually going to be using it as a hotel or similar use. The last thing that I'm asking for, and we are asking for actually, is that on February the 7th, you went ahead and passed a noticing requirement that is new. Beginning in July, our tenants are supposed to be noticed. When I walked door to door to projects, the vast majority of people had no idea either what vacation rental conversion meant. They also had not received the notice. They came to the meetings and they wrote letters because they did not want one of these in their neighborhood. And I am asking that you make sure that before any of these are actually set in the calendar, that we are going to be able to notice the tenants, which is what you actually agreed to in July, in February, excuse me, for the July and August meeting. When we were at the meeting in February, when this was discussed, it says, they said that they may not actually have everything done and ready to go beginning in July 1. And what I'm just trying to make sure is that actually that does happen. And if it doesn't, that we reschedule that to a later date. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Goran did the same thing for eight and 10, so I'll do the same thing for you. So, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I think the request that these dates not be set until additional notice goes out is, that's not a reasonable request. The city has complied with all existing legal notice requirements. Any noticing for those hearings is going to come out prior to those hearings. This is a pretty clear and transparent tactic just to try to further delay some projects. I would actually agree with Ms. Gott about one thing she said, which is that the city really does need a clear ordinance that everybody can understand about vacation rentals. But in the absence of one, the first chance we're going to have to really tackle this subject is going to be in these appeal hearings. And the public, who also owns the properties, that's also part of the public, they have a right to their appeal in a timely manner, and we'll all have a great opportunity to discuss it at those appeal hearings. So I would request that you stick to the dates that are presented in your consent calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Dominguez.
I actually want to ask a question on this last issue. I don't know if we have staff here regarding notice. And namely, we, I know you came before the council a few months ago, and we had a discussion about notice to tenants. Has the, has that new protocol been implemented, or where are we with that?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, you're correct. We had, we do still hope that by July 1st, we'll have the necessary software and ability to provide notice to tenants. Even if we don't, we still want to make good on our commitment that we did indicate that we want to try to do that by July 1st. I don't know if we'll have the ease of software application to do it by then, but we do have other methods that are just a little more time-consuming to do it, that we can still do it.
So the outcome you'd be looking for is getting notice to the neighbors for these two appeals within what window of time before the hearings?
We send a notice 10 days before the hearing date.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Okay. And then there was a couple of speaker slips for item seven. If you can read item seven.
Item seven, grant agreement with Coalition Against Gun Violence for gun buyback events.
Thank you. Jeff Ziba-Sandival and then Jaclyninda. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I am here on behalf of the Coalition Against Gun Violence. I'm one of the coordinators for the gun buyback. I just wanted to thank you guys for giving us a grant to have this gun buyback that is going to be happening in June. You know, Santa Barbara seems like a peaceful place, but gun violence affects everyone. We've had two gun buybacks, and both gun buybacks have collected over 200 guns each. So that says a lot for a community. We also want to inform you that we've been in conversation or in connection with the police department for to have another gun buyback and possibly scheduling it for November. It gives incentive for the community because around the holiday seasons, you're able to, you know, we give the $100 gift card, so people are more, have more of the incentive to actually come and bring the guns. And also, it's a lot more convenient for the police department to dispose of the guns. So I want to thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Inda.
Madam Mayor, Council. Four years ago, my foster son got shot and died in that incident. He was found dead the day after in bushes. He was riding his bicycle home in Santa Maria. Now it's a cold case. I'm very proud of the fact that in this county, we have led the effort in developing these kinds of issues and bringing them up to the surface. The Coalition Against Gun Violence has worked very hard since then to develop these gun buybacks. In the county, we're the only city that's doing it. And so I urge you to consider that as a future endeavor for the city as well because the partnerships are important. One of the things that I'd like to mention in regards to where we're at is that the Coalition is having a difficult time obtaining the insurance requested by the grant that we've gone through in this process. And it's because we're a nonprofit. We don't have the ability to carry firearms, and there's a firearms provision within that. And so we hope that you review all of the different things that are in front of you and take the proper recommendations, and that you consider continuing doing these efforts with us in the long run. Like I said, we will be having one in November as well. The long-term effort here is really to make sure that councils throughout the region are supporting things like gun buybacks, and you guys are really taking the forefront in helping us by developing these grants and helping us with this process as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Just a note on the items, on the date of the appeals, I can, I'm going to vote for the consent calendar, but certainly can work with Mr. Casey. What we've done in the past is the timing of when it shows up on the agenda. We can have it later in the, later in the agenda, which would be towards the end of the workday anyway. As you well know, we're normally here at 4:00, 5:00, 6:00 o'clock, even when we start at 2:00. So we can certainly look at that agenda management as we move forward, as opposed to a separate specific 6:00 PM date. But we can try to look at that. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Regarding item seven, what's the liability that we're going to accept or waive? If you could, somebody could talk about that.
I think Mr. Samario's coming up.
Officer Mario, Finance Director. So I spoke to our risk manager, Mark Howard, about this matter. My understanding was that they were going to work to see if they can get insurance, liability insurance, even with the firearm exclusion, which means that it covers all other exposures, but nothing related to anything involving in a firearm, and we were comfortable with that. I'm not sure, I'm hearing now that they weren't able to get that. Is that correct? You weren't able to get any kind of insurance at all?
No, we couldn't get the insurance.
Okay. Yeah, as long, yeah, we're fine with the coverage, even if it has that exclusion for firearms.
And is that what we did before, previously?
I'm not sure what we did before, to be honest with you. I don't think we had anything before. I'm not sure what we did before, to be honest with you.
Do you want to come up and?
Well, and just to be clear for the public, the volunteers don't touch the firearms. Only police officers are handling the firearms the entire time.
Right. It's really a transportation issue, I think.
It's a transportation issue, but previously, we did not have this grant. We raised all the funds ourselves in other modes, and so now that we're expanding the amount of time that we're having here, we got this grant from the city, which is why we need this extra coverage. And so previously, for the other gun buybacks, we didn't, we had our basic event coverage picking up all the costs.
Okay. All right. I'm satisfied with that.
Okay, good. Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
There is.
Okay, moved by Hotchkiss, seconded by Dominguez. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. A report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Hart.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The Finance Committee met and considered the third quarter review for fiscal year 2017, and also passed a recommendation forward to the council about the fiscal year 2018 budget. And we did discuss a socially responsible investment policy strategy and have directed staff to work on developing that, the specifics of that, and that was a unanimous recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Great. Okay, item number 12.
Item 12, subject, reestablishment of the Sign Committee. Recommendation that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending sections 22.22.130, 22.68.080, 22.70.050, 22.70.070, 22.70.080, and 22.70.095 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code relating to the sign regulations in order to reestablish the Sign Committee to full committee status. Adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving revised sign review guidelines and repealing resolution number 10-91, and adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara reestablishing a full Sign Committee and repealing resolution numbers 06-084 and 10-92.
Thank you. Mr. LeMans.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm joined by one of my staff members, our planner that staffs the Sign Committee. So we have staff here, actually staff the Sign Committee. Before I get into the recommended council actions, I do want to give you a summary of what I intend to explain today, which is why we are proposing to reestablish the Sign Committee, and also give you some particulars about what the proposed Sign Committee constitution will be. So today's action would be to reestablish the Sign Committee. The proposed amendments to sign regulations are required, as well as the adoption of revised updated sign review guidelines. So some background information, in 2009, due to the economic downturn, there was discussions that were made with our design review boards to figure out different ways to reduce our workload and be more efficient. One of the suggestions was to adjust the sign review processing, and a proposal to reduce the Sign Committee and create two separate consent reviews was eventually recommended and eventually adopted by City Council. The change was supported by the Sign Committee as a temporary basis change, and again, adopted by Council in 2010. So why change now? Well, we've actually had Sign Committees that come forward and said, this was supposed to be interim, not seven years later. What's going on? Can we not have the reestablishment of the Sign Committee? So this request was made to staff, and we thought it was appropriate. We do actually have the staffing for it. The two separate reviews for ABR and HLC sign applications are not a preferred situation because what essentially happens is you have different members of the Sign Committee making independent decisions, and they're not unified and consistent because of those separate decision points. We've also had to adapt by making more conforming reviews. The reality is it's more difficult to actually adjourn a Sign Committee meeting and get the members there. And I'll explain to you about the attendance and the request to make changes now regarding the composition of the members. And there's also a desire to be more consistent in the sign application reviews. If you have both, two or three members there present, they're learning from one another, and there's more consistency in actually how sign applications are reviewed. So the proposed Sign Committee, as we're proposing today, is actually reducing the original five change, and again, adopted by council in 2010. So why change now? Well, we've actually had sign committees that come forward and said, this was supposed to be interim, not seven years later, what's going on? Can we not have the reestablishment of the sign committee? So this request was made to staff. And we thought it was appropriate. We do actually have the staffing for it. The two separate reviews for ABR and HLC sign applications are not a preferred situation, because what essentially happens is you have different members of the sign committee making independent decisions, and they're not unified and consistent because of those separate decision points. We've also had to adapt by making more conforming reviews. The reality is, it's more difficult to actually adjourn a sign committee meeting and get the members there. And I'll explain to you about the attendance and the requests to make changes now regarding the composition of the members. And there's also desire to be more consistent in the sign application reviews. If you have both, two or three members there present, they're learning from one another, and there's more consistency in actually how sign applications are reviewed. So the proposed sign committee, as we're proposing today, is actually reducing the original five members to three members. We think that's a gradual way to reconstitute and reestablish the sign committee. One of the difficulties of recruiting sufficient number of citizen volunteers, we just had an open recruitment for the sign committee, requested that a business professional, real estate professional be sought to fill that third vacancy, and we were not successful. So three, we're even having trouble getting some more sign committee members to volunteer. We do still have two current sign committee members that would remain on the committee as design professionals. They're technically at-large, because they're not members of any designated review board. Natalie Cope and Bob Cadingham have actually been around for about 10 years. They've actually extended their terms, and we feel very fortunate that we've had those two individuals reviewing these applications. But we also have to anticipate the future without those two individuals. What are we going to do if they decide to not re-up and continue their participation? So this is why we're actually feeling we need to get some more experience in design professionals or volunteers involved with the sign committee. The composition is proposed as three at-large members, and it would also reduce the time commitment for the overextended ABR and HLC members. If you realize or understand the commitment necessary to attend the sign committee, on ABR Mondays, that would involve having a member attend beginning at 2:00 p.m., and then transition into a 3:00 p.m. meeting, and often staying into the late evening. So that's a tremendous commitment on the part of members who agree to be on the sign committee that are from the ABR and HLC. The same thing holds for HLC. We have our meetings at 10:00 in the morning. They would have to come in at 10:00 to review sign committee meetings, return back at 1:30. Very difficult to work that into your schedule. There's also the commitment for regular consent reviews. Some members also serve on consent reviews on that same day. So it turns up to be into a long day for these board members. And that's why we're recommending some reduction in that participation, and having, still meeting a minimum two-member quorum. We still feel that there should be some professional experience related to the selection of these individuals. As you see volunteers apply for the sign committee, we'd ask you to make sure that they have some type of design expertise that they could bring to comment on these applications. Again, we're asking that a business owner or a real estate professional be part of that makeup. So what I've included here is the actual existing sign review process, as was amended in 2010, where you see two consent reviews that are separate. So depending on what type of application, you're either routed into a conforming review for HLC, or an ABR conforming review with one member here, or you get into a consent review. So again, they're separated reviews. When you look at the original composition, you still had a conforming review process, which is easier. It's a weekly basis here and here. But now you have a conform, a regular fall sign committee with three members. That's the idea, that they would be united and have decisions made together as one sign committee. This is consistent with the makeup that was originally abandoned in 2010. So what are the expected outcomes? We believe it would actually reduce the amount of meetings per week, including the preparation of agendas and minutes for those two consent review meetings. Reduces the time commitment for ABR and HLC members. Again, that's an added benefit. And existing planning and administrative staff support can support work of the full sign committee where it's in place. We can actually staff these assigned committee meetings. And we believe it will improve efficiencies and have a positive effect for sign applicants, customers. But again, they will get consistent reviews. They don't go to one member, get a different answer, and come in for a different application and get a separate type of review. There are no significant expenditures that will be required with this change. Along with the additional related updates, we do have to, again, update the ordinance as well as the guidelines. And the review process will begin again with a full sign committee meeting regularly, biweekly, every Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. And the David Get Hard Room is available during that time hour to commit to those type of meetings, schedules. In conclusion, again, the temporary sign committee composition has worked as expected for approximately six years. Was intended to be an interim solution. Planning staff supports, as the members request, to reestablish the sign committee. And the ordinance committee reviewed this proposal and voted to reestablish the sign committee, and therefore support this reestablishment. So our recommendation is to reestablish the sign committee to full committee status, that we introduce the ordinance amendments to Title 22, and to adopt the resolutions as proposed in your council package. I do want to add one additional item. In response to a letter from the public received to council regarding the HLC's charter mandated authority over exterior alterations in El Pueblo Viejo, a legitimate question was raised for consideration. Should all signs be reviewed by the HLC? The current proposal will effectively eliminate a HLC member from the full sign committee review. So we recognize that there will be a reduced involvement by HLC members. However, what we believe is council has granted review and approval authority as long as decisions are consistent with the dot design guidelines. For example, council has previously delegated this authority by approving a conforming review process, where the chair or vice chair of the sign committee are allowed to approve sign applications, and allowing staff to make approval of decisions for minor alterations in EPV. So that process has already been established to defer and delegate these decisions if those decisions are consistent with design guidelines that are adopted and reviewed. This process has allowed approval to decisions to become or be effectuated more rapidly. This has allowed applicants to save time and money to avoid waiting for decisions.
I have a quick question. You read a quote, I think, that was really long, and you read it quickly. Can you reread it one more time, please? I want to make sure I understand.
That council has previously delegated this authority? Is that the one? Or the charter? Okay.
Well, the thread you're getting at to us is that the HLC is supposed to be reviewing something. And then you read some code that is like a substitute process.
Sure. Let me explain to you what the charter issue is. The charter issue specifically directs the authority for the Historic Landowners Commission to review all exterior alterations. And one can infer that-
Of what?
In El Pueblo Viejo.
Okay, in EPV.
In EPV. So the inference in the letter is that if you eliminate the HLC's participation within the sign committee composition, which is proposed now, as they will only attend as an alternate, that that, in fact, is not consistent with the HLC charter direction to have HLC involved with all decisions that affect the exterior appearance.
In the EPV?
Yes. And what I'm citing is that the council has already approved that delegation of authority already in previous changes to our ordinance, specifically the conforming review process.
So can the council override the charter?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, we got into this this afternoon in response to a letter from a capable government, I won't say watchdog, but watcher. And the charter says that the HLC has the power and duty to review all structural alterations, and that includes signs. The charter does not say that the HLC can't create guidelines for EPV, which it has done, and then delegate a portion of its work to one of its agents, in this case, the sign committee chair, if I'm remembering correctly, Jaime. So in our view, the council by ordinance has the authority to effect this delegation, because the review and approval is happening under guidelines created by the HLC. And the application of those guidelines is, if not ministerial, very close to it. There is a policy question in there, though. Do you want to take that work off of the HLC? As I understand it, and Mr. LeMone will probably be able to elaborate better, this, there's a real timeliness and delay problem if we went forward with the HLC handling all signs. And Jaime, did I get most of that right?
That's correct. And just to cite the delegation authority, previous council resolutions also included that delegation authority that you were providing for. And over the years, the chair has been either an HLC member or an ABR member, and in this case, we've had somebody in there that has not been either, and has worked fine.
They still have to make findings based on the APV guidelines.
That's correct. And staff is there to oversee the applications, to make sure that they are consistent with guidelines, and advise the member where they are deficient. And there's still an appeal mechanism, appeal mechanism that allows decisions to be reviewed by the HLC specifically before it gets to council.
Okay. Do we have any speaker slips on this? No? Okay, Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. LeMone, would you go back to the proposed sign review process slide, please? I think it's number nine, maybe?
There.
Okay. Is it right at this point? We can barely read one of these. Okay. Just, so I understand, in the name of customer service and clarity for an applicant, at what stages could one possibly get a sign approved? So one comes to the counter. So what are the different possibilities for, you know, walking out with a permit?
Sure, sure. The fastest, more expeditious way to get an approval is to qualify for a conforming review. One of the unique things about signs is that there is no staff administrative approval process. That is strictly given to the sign committee members. So there's no over-the-counter approvals for signs. However, the conforming review process, which was initiated to help expedite approvals, can actually occur very quickly. There's a standard review period for these, weekly, either Tuesday or Wednesday mornings. And so someone can actually submit something on Tuesday and get reviewed on Wednesday and get approved, and get a permit by Thursday. So that's how expeditious the process can be. Unfortunately, if there are projects that involve a considerable amount of signage or an exception, that's where we elevate the process to the full sign committee review. Or in this, currently, it's consent. We call it consent. And they meet biweekly. So you do have to schedule that item and have it coincide with the ABR week, where those ABR meetings occur, or the HLC week. So conceivably, you could come in and have to wait for that to be agendized. And then you'd have to come before the board or the sign committee and have an action taken.
Okay, yeah, because I, you know, you mentioned kind of what can be the capricious nature, i.e. one person says, you know, blue, one says green, and you have, you have the applicant that is looking, puzzling at us, saying, what's the problem with the process? So this seems like that simplifies that slightly, takes it out of the extra hand, potentially, unless of course it's non-conforming.
Well, it would, Councilmember Ross, we would combine the reviewers at one table, and therefore, there'd be consistency and feedback on how each is deliberating on the signs.
So expedition service is really where we're going for this?
We believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A member of the ordinance committee, and my concern, I'm ready to support staff recommendation, was that power would be concentrated in a three-person configuration rather than five. And so we had a discussion about that, and I think staff is ready to monitor how that would work. And then I imagine there would be the opportunity for a new council liaison assignment, if this is a new committee. And so perhaps that council member can keep an eye on things. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Along those same lines, will we monitor this to see if it's working the way we want to?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Hotchkiss, with any ordinance amendment, you could request that we give you an update at a later point in work towards how efficient and changes have been. That's something that you could incorporate that.
So we can do that now, request a report back in a year. I would suggest that. Thank you.
Okay. We have no, yeah, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move staff recommendation A, B, and C, with Councilmember Hotchkiss's suggestion that we get a report back at some point that's appropriate.
Okay, moved by Maria, seconded by Hotchkiss. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous? Great, thank you. We have a number of closed sessions. If you could read that.
Item 13, subject: Conference with Real Property Negotiators, as described in Agenda Item 13. Item 14, subject: Conference with City Attorney, Anticipated Litigation, as described in Agenda Item 14. Item 15, subject: Conference with Labor Negotiator, as described in Agenda Item 15.
Thank you. And then we will return as close to 6:00 as we can after those closed sessions. Okay, I'm going to call the city council meeting back into session. There is nothing reportable out of closed session. So we are on to item number 16.
Item 16, subject: Interviews for City Advisory Groups.
Great. Thank you for your patience. We just had, closed session took a little longer than we thought. Thank you for being here, and this is our last interview opportunity for applicants to boards and commissions. So I appreciate you coming in. And what I'm going to do is go through the titles of all the boards and commissions. And when you hear one that you've applied for, please come up to the podium here and state your name, and so we can check it off and explain a little bit about why you're interested in being on this board or commission. You don't have, you can, a couple of minutes really says everything. I know we've had a couple that took much longer, and believe me, if we want to follow up with questions, we can. But we do want to hear what you have to say. And if you are an incumbent and looking for another term, maybe a little bit about your experience on that board and commission, then appreciate very much your interest in volunteering with the city. So I'm going to start with Architectural Board of Review, if there are any applicants for that. Okay. Central Coast Commission for Senior Citizens. Okay. Civil Service Commission. Community Development and Human Services. We're moving right along, aren't we? Okay. Community Events and Festivals. Come on up.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Roger Perry. I have served on this commission now for 11 years. I believe it was a four-year initial term. They can't get rid of me. I really appreciate Sarah Rubin and the new life that she's brought to this, and I hope you'll consider me for another 11-year term. I am down for two. Would you like me to cover both now or come back?
Well, I don't have your name under Community Events and Festivals, so I'm going to check with the clerk on that. What was the other one?
Parks and Rec.
Okay. I mean, you can certainly, well-
Whatever you'd like.
Okay. So why don't you speak to Parks and Rec, but-
And it may or might not have been a term. The secretary last week, when I came in, told me I should-
That you're what?
That I should re-interview. That was the first-
For Community Events and Festivals?
Yes.
Okay. Well, if the clerk can verify this and get back to us on your term and what's necessary, that would be, you don't, the clerk can do that for us.
Not a worry.
So we can get that information. But, and then Parks and Recreation, go ahead.
Not wanting to overly embellish the things that I've done in the community over my years here, I submitted a letter. I hope you've had a minute to look at the contributions I've made. The one that I am going to emphasize is one that I'm very proud of. With the guidance of Nancy Rapp, four or five years ago, we formed a community alliance with the Park Foundation, where we raised over $50,000 to replace all the volleyball courts at East Beach. This seemed to have been a new concept. We had community members using a city foundation to fund a city resource, and it was actually just a thing of beauty. Other than that, you've seen the other contributions I've made. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, very much.
I've been here long enough.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Library Advisory Committee. Library Advisory Committee.
Good evening.
Mayor Schneider, members of City Council, good evening again. My name is Milt Hess, and I'm here to express my interest in being appointed to the County Library Advisory Committee. I'm currently the Chair of our city's library board. I was going to start with a summary of my background and experience, but you have that on my application, and there are important issues for us to discuss. And so if it's okay with you, I'm going to get right to it. As I said yesterday during a public comment for the library's budget hearing, almost four years ago, I stood before you as an applicant for a seat on the library board. I told you that I hoped to help address the library's future, because I felt that the focus was too much on the here and now. For most of my tenure on the board, the three and a half years so far, the Library Advisory Committee was not on our radar. We discussed the new children's library at length, the redesigned library plaza, and with the arrival of Jessica Cariante as our new director, the innovative programs that the library was introducing. However, thanks to the director's initiative in identifying and addressing the inequities in the county library system and the costs to our city, the committee is now very much on our radar. I wrote to you last week on behalf of the board stating our position on these issues. Yesterday, we heard from a parade of public officials and concerned citizens from Galida and other communities in Zone One, asking that we maintain the status quo. I heard only one voice among them who expressed any embarrassment about being subsidized by the city of Santa Barbara. All the others seemed to view it as an entitlement from, as I called it, their rich uncle. The Library Advisory Committee is going to have to face up to the inequities built into the current system. For example, why does Santa Barbara receive the county per capita allocation only for city residents? Why don't we receive the allocation for at least some of the folks living in the immediately surrounding unincorporated areas? The answer is hidden, as I wrote last week, in the midst of history. Santa Barbara needs a representative on the committee who can speak knowledgeably and forcefully for our city's interests. And when the county engages a consultant to assess the current situation and make recommendations, we're going to need a representative with the background and experience to evaluate the consultant's report and provide constructive feedback. I believe I have the knowledge of our library, the skills and experience, and the credibility to be effective as our representative on the committee. So I thank you for your consideration, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Did you have a question? Mr. Dominguez, go ahead.
And thank you for participating yesterday. That was a long meeting. The IT background that you have is intriguing. Do you have a vision for libraries in the future, how IT plays a role?
Not specifically. The, you know, my involvement with the library started seven years ago, when I helped start the computer coaching program at the library. And every Sunday, I am still volunteering as a computer coach. So, you know, we play a role in helping to raise the level of capa competence, I don't want to say expertise, but competence, of the citizens who take advantage of the computer coaching program. People use the computers at the library a lot, and clearly, it's a resource for people who don't have access to their own. But, you know, the whole world is digital. The collection is increasingly available and accessed digitally. And when I was a consultant, I remember a federal government agency asked us to forecast the future of technology, so that they could, you know, do their planning better. And I looked back, and I said, well, 10 years ago, we couldn't forecast where we are today. So today, how can I forecast where we're going to be 10 years from now? But, you know, as the vendors create new tools and new capabilities, a creative library staff, frankly, the kind that we have, will find ways to use it effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry that my...
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
So just real quick.
Go ahead, Ms. Maria.
You think that the city should get unincorporated dollars because people who live in the unincorporated areas use the downtown library? Is that your argument? And real quick, just because there's a bunch of people out there.
Yeah. My argument would be that when the consultant addresses this whole question of the allocation of county resources to the, to all the citizens in the county, this should not be taken as a given.
Okay.
That the boundary for Santa Barbara is our city limits, but the boundary for Galida includes Mission Canyon.
Got it. I hear what you're saying. So I would like to appoint someone, Mr. Hess, that, because it seemed like we had a coming together finally, after the long hearing yesterday, that, so I know you're going to fight for us, but I'm hoping that you'll be able to work with the other branches, because it really sounded like there, we all want library services, and so share expertise, and you do such a good job on the library board, our internal board.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess my, there, I didn't see the, my binder is covering the lights. Go ahead, Mr....
I just don't want to make your approval preconditioned. I appreciate your judgment, and I'm not going to tell you one way or the other, but I like the way you reason. So that's the way I'm going to make a decision. I just let you know.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, just one more thing. What would you think about having the two committees meeting periodically together?
You mean the library board and the library advisory committee? I can see a lot of value in the exchange of views. I guess, I mean, the primary reason that I'm applying to be on the library advisory committee is because I want to share the views of our library board, or make sure that those views are, in fact, a part of the discussions. Now, there are about 18 people on the library advisory committee, and Santa Barbara has two, our library director and our member, our city of Santa Barbara member. And we just, and we need to have a voice, a strong voice, an advocate on that committee. I mean, we're not going to just be at loggerheads with them, but we need to say our piece. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else for the library advisory board? Okay. Creeks Advisory Committee, come on up. Good evening.
Hi, Ryan Parker. I'm the general manager of the Kimpton Canary Hotel. I've been living in Santa Barbara for about three and a half years, and I've become actively engaged in the community. I'm on the board of directors of Visit Santa Barbara, Hospitality Santa Barbara, and I engage in the Downtown Santa Barbara organization, working on both the retail and marketing. The Creeks Committee is important to me, as I'm actively interested in the environment, and I realize the value of the oceanfront and the different water quality aspects to Santa Barbara's tourism. So, here I am.
And you have a great spot, amazing rooftop.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate that.
The perch. Great, thank you very much. Any questions? All right. You also had a surprise visit by your former vice president, which was kind of cool.
No stress with that.
Yeah, no stress with that whatsoever. Harbor Commission? Okay. Yep, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Schneider, and everyone on the council committee. Thank you for considering my appointment for the Harbor Commission. I was actually required, asked...
What's your name?
Sabrina Krantz, sorry. I was actually asked by a friend to consider this, and I had a chance to meet with Carl Tryberg, as well as Scott Reitman. And I think the main thing that came up is because I was quite involved with the new waterfront that went in the walkway, partly because I'm on the, I'm the president of the Santa Barbara Oregga Canoe Club. So I'm down there, got four or five days a week. I'm also on the event committee for the Santa Barbara Yacht Club, and I've been a longtime boat owner, so I'm in the harbor quite a bit. So it came up, as seeing I'm involved in so many things, and I might as well do something about it officially. So, so I guess I was just as much curious about the position as Scott and Carl was, you know, in seeing whether or not I'd be a good fit. So when I met with them, and we spoke, and we realized that there is a lot of people we know in the same area, it's a small town, and we have a lot of the same interests, as well as wanting to make the waterfront, the harbor area, a better place for a lot of people there. And I thought maybe that I could put this to good use. My background is more, my professional background is in finance. I'm a financial advisor, I'm a portfolio manager. Everything I do on the water is for fun. So that's where my passion is. So hopefully, within the combination of the both, I could be of some help.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions for me?
Nope. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Harbor Commission? Historic landmarks. Come on up.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. My name is Gillette Hall. We have recently moved here to Santa Barbara, so I'm a newcomer, and I greatly enjoy being an active part of a community where I live. So I have particularly applied for this Historic Preservation Commission, because it would be new to me, and therefore, of great interest. But I also think I bring some particular elements of my background that could contribute, and I'll just be very brief about those. I am deeply familiar with the cultural, linguistic, and historic heritage that underpins Santa Barbara. I was raised in Mexico and Brazil. I'm fluent in Spanish and Portuguese. I have a master's degree in Latin American Studies. I'm also a trained economist, PhD. I recently stepped down from a position at Georgetown University in order to move here. I'm working independently now, so my schedule is flexible. My recent research is on indigenous peoples of the Americas, so I combine a deep background in the colonial history of the Americas of California, with also a deep interest in the history that goes much further back. The fundamental point is that one of the major drawing points of Santa Barbara, we chose to move here, we actively changed our lives to move here, is the focus on historic preservation, and the beauty, and the depth of cultural vibrancy that that gives the community. And I admired the town from afar for putting such emphasis on that, and I'd love to put my efforts to helping that. I don't bring any agenda. I have worked on city commissions before. In Eugene, Oregon, I was on the Human Rights Commission, and then became the Chair of that commission. I enjoy helping meetings run smoothly, and just being a positive, engaged member, helping to move things along and hopefully do things right.
Well, great. Well, welcome to Santa Barbara.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Any questions? Okay. Nope, you're good. You're good. Thank you. Anyone else, Historic Landmarks? Okay. Housing Authority? Come on up.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Thank you for taking the time. My name's Evan Crook, and I would like to apply for the Housing Authority Commission of Santa Barbara. This is my first time applying for any city commission. I'm a relative newcomer to this, but I was a resident and member of the Santa Barbara Student Housing Cooperative for more than three years. That's a nonprofit 501(c)(3) in Isla Vista, dedicated to providing affordable housing to the student and general community. In that organization, every resident and renter is also a member of this nonprofit and has a vote in determining house-level issues, and can determine organization-level issues through the board of directors. So I served as president of my house several times, along with other positions, and participated in discussions about everything from managing our chore policy to remodeling our houses and acquiring new properties, and continuing to expand our organization. If elected or appointed to the Housing Authority Commission, I would be interested in promoting cooperative and co-owned housing as a part of a solution to our housing crisis in Santa Barbara, and community-based solutions of that nature, as well as, my other background is in technology and software engineering, so I would also be interested in seeing how technology could help the Housing Authority serve its mission better, increase accessibility, and so on.
Great. You also applied for the Rental Housing Mediation Board and Transportation and Circulation, so if you want to speak to those now, you can.
I did. I respectfully withdraw my application to Transportation and Circulation.
Okay.
And I think I will focus on the housing-related ones. So for Rental Housing Mediation Board, I did put down that I would prefer the Housing Authority Committee, but for Rental Housing and Mediation Board, I'm also interested in that for many of the same reasons. I currently rent downtown, and I'm interested in representing the rights and interests of renters and working proactively with renters and landlords. The interesting thing about living in the cooperative is that I was both a renter and a representative of the organization that was the landlord at the same time, as it were. So I got to sort of see both sides of that coin. I was also, as House President, one of my roles was mediating any conflict that arose between House members and within the organization, which I never had any formal training for, but which I did participate in several times, and people told me that I was always fair and balanced, so I guess maybe they were right.
Great.
And so I think my experience and background could make me uniquely suited for that.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else for the Housing Authority? Okay. Living Wage Advisory Committee. We have all those. Neighborhood Advisory Council. Come on up. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Schneider and council members. My name is Brittany Heaton, and I am coming before you to ask to be reappointed to the Neighborhood Advisory Council. I served my first three-year term, and I'm currently serving as the Chair. I represent the West Downtown neighborhood. And I would say, just to speak on my experience, when I got involved in the council, I didn't really know exactly what to expect. I am a public servant. I work for the county in Public Works, so I understand the public process, but I wasn't as familiar with the Parks and Rec Recreation Department and Neighborhood Outreach Services and some of the programming that the city provides. And I am so grateful for the three-year opportunity that I've had thus far. It's been an amazing learning opportunity. And I think if you reappoint me, you'll see that I'm an advocate, I've become an advocate for the Neighborhood Outreach Services, and I can really provide a liaison for community members in the West Downtown neighborhood and throughout Santa Barbara. Many of our community members are not able to participate in city government for various reasons, due to scheduling, and so I'm trying to make myself available and listen to what the issues are, and bring them to the council. And I think we've been very successful in providing a space, a safe space, for community members to come and speak that's very informal, I mean, follow the Brown Act, but very informal and comfortable, and they can share their concerns. And then as council, as council members, we can bring that to you or the various staff members to try to address those issues as best we can. So I appreciate the opportunity, and I hope you'll see it in your, see it to reappoint me to the council. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you for your service. Thank you. Anyone else for Neighborhood Advisory? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Hotchkiss.
Madam Mayor, Marta Weeks broke her knee two weeks ago.
How?
Is immobile. And at least sent a message saying she was hoping that we could make an exception. I realize we can't really make exceptions, but just wanted to put forth her name, because I know she has great experience and a longtime Realtor.
Okay. We want to make sure the clerk got the note about the...
So it's...
Okay, you got that. Great. Okay. Thank you for mentioning that. Come on up. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Raymond Codri. Originally from Canada, I've lived here for 23 years now, still 100% Canadian. I moved to Florida a couple of years ago, or after I graduated UCSB to work at Fidelity, and I came back to Paradise. I'm just here to help. I want to do anything I can to help. I'm pretty good at getting people together. I'm a little nervous right now, haven't spoken in front of a large group of people since college, and anything I can do, I will do to help. That's all.
Great. Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Great. Anyone else for Neighborhood Advisory? Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Schneider and City Councilmembers. My name is Jackie Barrios. I am a somewhat recent transplant to Santa Barbara from Chicago. And I am a recent homeowner in Santa Barbara. And I feel it is in my interest and in the interest of my children to become, now as a permanent resident of Santa Barbara, to become much more active and involved in our community. I was a small business owner in Chicago in my previous life. And at that time, I opened up a business in a very underserved and somewhat gentrifying neighborhood. And during the five years that I had a business, we saw our neighborhood through our, primarily through the small business owners and through our outreach, change it from an underserved neighborhood to a thriving and boisterous community. And this was done through Neighborhood Watch programs, through recycling programs, through Neighborhood Outreach programs, and through festivals and fairs that we implemented. I'd like to use some of this experience to help create a more vibrant area in some of our underserved communities in Santa Barbara. And I welcomed the opportunity to do so. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Great. Any questions? Nope. Thank you. All right. Parks and Recreation. Is that someone coming up or leaving the room? You're leaving the room. Goodbye. Okay. Fantastic. All right. All right. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Emily Zacharias, and I've prepared a brief written statement based on the deputy clerk's guiding questions.
Sure. That's great.
I'll go ahead and start. I'm interested in serving on the Parks and Rec Commission. As I understand it, this commission assists in formulating city policy specifically as it pertains to all matters related to the Parks and Rec Department. This includes voting on proposals, budgets, resolutions put forth by administrators within the department, as well as weighing in on issues that affect our city's parks, coastline, trails, recreation offerings, facilities, and other public spaces, also reviewing the effectiveness or progress of particular programs or initiatives. We then make recommendations to you guys for further review and discussion, which would then determine city policies and ordinances. In addition, I know from watching the televised meetings that hearing presentations which report fiscal expenditures and revenues constitute a large portion of the commission's duties. So that's what I understand about the commission itself. As for me, I've worked for the Parks and Rec Department way back in the day, as I stated in my application, under several job titles including lifeguard, swim instructor, adapted aquatics instructor, and a park monitor. I've also been a public school teacher for eight years, specifically as a special education teacher for both the Los Angeles and Santa Barbara Unified School Districts, as well as the Santa Barbara County Education Office. I'm a graduate of UCSB with a BA and a master's in psychology, where I completed my thesis on the cognitive underpinnings of fraud in the elderly population. I have a history of engagement with my community, from securing grants to build a school garden in LA, the unveiling of which was attended by former LA Mayor Antonio Villarrealosa, as well as a grant from UCLA to develop an arts curriculum for students with special needs. I've also been to a month-long work-study program and leadership training at Esalen Institute, as well as council training with the Ojai Foundation, which focuses on fostering listening and communication skills in a group setting. I want to be appointed to this commission because I want to be more involved with my community. I am a huge outdoors person and pretty much go to a city park or open space every day. I want to continue to see the city's outdoor spaces be protected and respected. Needless to say, I'm deeply invested in the city, and now that I have a daughter, I feel the urge to participate more in the myriad civic duties that really should be required of all citizens. I have an immense interest in national politics, and after hearing former President Obama's farewell address, in which he stated in a nutshell that political engagement and activism starts at the grassroots level, I felt compelled to do something more. If it's true what they say that all politics is local, then for me, this commission seemed like a good start. I believe that I have many skills to offer that would be well-suited to positively contribute to this group. As far as specific issues or interests promoting or changing, that was one of the questions. The answer is yes. As a resident of Hidden Valley, I'm very interested in the progress of the Arroyo Open Space Project, and I've been following news on that issue closely. However, I noticed that there are no clear links of info on the website. I think that moving forward, there should be some info available on the Parks and Rec website that updates the public on that project. On the website, there were a couple key initiatives and what's new links. Both contain the same page, and they were not updated in over a year. So just keeping the public able to stay informed of new projects, like the Cabrillo bathhouse renovation, is also something that I was kind of looking for but didn't see a lot of information on. As for the recreation programs, I would love to see more offerings for youth ages zero to three. As a new mom, I was involved with pup group and other mom groups in town, but it would be fun to have a class or two geared towards the little ones, besides just swimming in the summer, which I do plan to enroll my daughter in. And then the community gardens is a huge interest. As an advocate of education and garden education in particular, I was wondering what the status is with the school partnerships, with the three community garden sites, and how, if those are currently ongoing, and if there are opportunities during the summer for kids to get their hands dirty. And if there are any questions? Yeah.
Thank you. If you want to send the questions over, we can get at least answers to you as...
Oh, yeah.
If you want to just, well, you can email that to me or something like that.
Oh, okay. Yeah. They, I noticed some people were guiding.
That's fine.
I thought...
No, that was great.
I should just grab it, but...
We just want to answer your questions. We just can't do it right the second, but we'd be happy to.
Oh, my questions for the...
Right. What about this?
Because it said, are there certain interests and/or issues that you or desires of promoting are changing? And are there needs in the community that are not met? And that kind of thing. So, yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Any questions? Good evening.
Thank you very much. Parks and Rec, anyone else? Rental Housing Mediation Board? Come on up. Good evening.
First time up here? A little nervous.
You're fine.
Okay. Hello, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Holly Garson. I'm excited to speak with you tonight, and thank you for your time. I am here as a volunteer applicant for the Rental Housing Mediation Board as a tenant position. I initially found out about this board through the City of Santa Barbara email. And then this board immediately caught my eye as I'm interested and really eager and passionate about anything related to housing through the city or the county. After attending a board meeting, meeting with some of the board members, and sitting down and talking with Andrea Bafana, who is the senior board specialist there, it became so clear to me that I feel so drawn that this is where I'm meant to be to give back to our community. As I mentioned, I did meet with Andrea one-on-one, so I am well-versed in the tasks and commitments for this group. I do have the time right now in my work life and personal life to be dedicated to this role. And if appointed, I would continue to uphold those duties. I feel that I am a great fit for this role as I bring the quality of openness, openness to actively listen and appropriately advise. So nervous. I believe that moving from conflict to compromise is one of the greatest, one of the most challenging communicative skills you can master. And I'm still working on this and will continue to work on this throughout my life. However, I feel that I have built a strong foundation of success in this skill so far, so why not share that with others? To circle back, I really want to express my passion for housing through this group. This board is a vehicle to promote positive change in housing, whether it be affordable housing or through single-family residences. The relationships that are being built between landlords and tenants and homeowners, those all speak to the voice that we have in regards to housing in Santa Barbara. My wish is that let's work with what we have. Let's make these, sorry, let's work with what we have. Let's make these relationships and renting experiences positive and stronger. Let's resolve and create healthy living situations for all folks of all demographics. Then let's build upon that. As a young professional, having a blessed career thus far, making a decent living wage, I still find myself wondering, am I going to be able to make this stick? Can I stay in Santa Barbara for the long term, purchase a home here, raise a family here? And at this point, my answer is no. I want to, though. Therefore, I am acting now. Serving this board is my way of contributing to a brighter future for all housing in Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Madam Mayor, I don't have a question. I just want you and others to know that the Rental Housing Mediation Program, they provide training for the new people. So it's pretty extensive, and you seem like you want to learn, so I'm just letting you know.
I believe she mentioned at the board meeting that it was 25 hours worth of shadowing and learning how to mediate, so...
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else on the Rental Housing Mediation Board? Okay. I see a whole bunch of youth council candidates. I'm going to quickly go over to this, just to make sure, any single-family design board applicants first, come on up. And then we'll do all the youth council members at the end. Welcome.
Hi there, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Robert Richards. I'm a landscape architect here in Santa Barbara. I've been licensed as a landscape architect for two years, and I have eight years' previous experience to that, working locally with other landscape architects. I'm a graduate at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo School Landscape Architecture and also studied at Santa Barbara City College. I have experience drawing, planting, irrigation, hardscape, grading and drainage, and lighting plans for local projects. And I have participated in presenting these projects to the SFDB, to the ABR and CBR, C-Bar, rather, during meetings. And so I'm familiar with the review process and the permit process for the city. They asked to kind of provide some description of the general functions of the board. So my understanding of the board is its purpose is to review single-family residential projects to see that they are compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And to me, the landscape element of these residential projects is a major factor in evaluating the project's compatibility. Another function of the board is to protect visual resources and promote the ecological sustainability of the city's built environment. An important issue to me is water-efficient landscaping. And as a landscape architect, I'm sensitive to this through the use of low-water-use plant materials and the design of water-efficient irrigation systems. I also like to promote the use of local materials and planting design which incorporates native plants that serve to protect and enhance the ecosystem present in our area. I also am sensitive to protecting our watershed as a natural resource through stormwater management. So I'm interested in being appointed to this group so that I can help to serve a public good for the city. And I'm also interested in being able to engage with other members of the design community as well as the constituents of the city. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Great. Single Family Design Board? Come on up.
Hello. Hi, everyone. Thanks for your time. My name is Lisa Laplaca. I'm an interior designer. I've been practicing about 35 years. I've lived in California for, or Santa Barbara for over 20 years now. And I just, I love the idea of being engaged in the community, and design is something I'm very passionate about. And I love the idea of making time, resources, and everything pay off. So I love being involved in a project where you can help manage the process and the outcome. I have time, and I obviously, you know, asked to be appointed to this board because I do have the time to give. And I think it'd be a lot of interesting. I love engaging with all team members and working with committees, so...
Great. You also indicated interest in both Architectural Board of Review and ABR?
Yeah.
I mean, HLC?
Yeah. Anything design-related. I mean, I'm just, I love Santa Barbara and the history of it, so that is also...
I'll just tell you, you happen to be one applicant of one for one, for ABR, and one applicant of many for Single Family Design Review Board. So just so you know that. But I just wanted to make sure you still had interest in ABR.
Well, you can put me in for that. Absolutely. I mean, I'm used to working with architects and all team members and have worked worldwide, so... But I love Santa Barbara and would love to engage in the community.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. Anyone else on Single Family Design Board? And then there was also Transportation, Circulation. And yet, come on up. And then we'll do the Youth Council.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Jennifer Krieger, and I am applying for the Transportation and Circulation Committee. Thank you so much for providing this time for me to share a little bit about my interest in joining the committee and how my experience may complement the existing commissioners and supporting staff. Like many this evening, I'm a recent transplant to Santa Barbara and a resident of District Six. Ms. Applegate in the City Clerk's office kindly provided some advance questions for me to address. So I'll do my best to address both of them or all of them, starting with my affirmation of being willing and able to devote the necessary time to serve a four-year term should I be appointed. I do not have any standing conflicts on Thursday evenings when I understand the commission meets. And as I understand it, the TCC was created nearly 20 years ago to advise council, as well as the Planning Commission as appropriate, on transportation-related issues such as the circulation element of the general plan and creating and continuing to implement policies and programs that promote active, sustainable transportation options that not only reduce congestion and wear and tear on our roads, but also encourage environmental protection and support healthy lifestyles and active, engaged communities. I'm interested in serving on the TCC. First, because as a new resident, I am looking for ways to get more rooted in my new home and to give back. And secondarily, transportation policy and planning is an area of personal and professional interest, an area where I feel that I can appropriately be of service. I have attended a TCC meeting, and I am personally and professionally involved in several sustainable transportation organizations, including Coast and SB Bike. I'm a lifelong environmentalist. I'm committed to reducing my own impact on the environment. And one of the ways that I seek to do that is by seeking out and using alternatives to driving alone. So I'm fortunate to live and work downtown, which means that I am first and foremost a pedestrian and secondarily, a cyclist, as well as a driver. I also occasionally use our bike, I'm sorry, occasionally use our buses and have taken the train on occasion as well. I even use watercraft as a member of the Santa Barbara Outrigger Canoe Club, as Sabrina mentioned earlier. So I think that leaves flying out of the Santa Barbara Airport as the only mode of transportation I have not yet taken advantage of, but I will take care of that shortly. Professionally, I work for the County of Santa Barbara, where I'm the project lead for our regional exploration of the Community Choice Energy Program. And I also oversee the implementation and monitoring of the county's climate action plan, which is heavily dependent on transportation-related emission reduction measures. I have met with city staff, as well as staff from other local and regional agencies, to try to identify potential areas of overlap as we're all working to address our mutual emission reduction goals. And I'm eager to share resources and best practices where it makes sense. Prior to moving to Santa Barbara just over a year ago, I have held many sustainability-related positions in which I promoted, developed, and implemented policies and programs that encourage sustainable forms of transportation and improvements to both passenger and fleet vehicles, ships, planes, and yes, even trains, all with the goal of reducing fuel consumption and lowering air pollution. Given my background, I would be most interested in advising the council and the Planning Commission as appropriate on the continuation and expansion of the city's impressive sustainable transportation efforts. That said, as a career public servant and a previous city commissioner for the City of Austin where I moved from, I do recognize the value in looking at issues from a policy-neutral perspective to really most effectively evaluate the pros and cons of proposals that would be in front of the committee. I'm a big proponent of benefit-cost analysis and weighing the trade-offs inherent in most of our policy decisions. So I would certainly apply the same lens to initiatives that are brought to the TCC for feedback. So I will leave it at that. Thank you very much, and I'm happy to address any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. All right. Youth Council. So when you come up and say your name, if you could also say which school you're from, because we have different categories that'll help us find the list. So whoever wants to come on up? Some of you look very familiar, especially, and any, all of you who were part of last night's festivities and organization. That was a great, great event last night, so congratulations.
Hi. My name is Ty Trosky, and I am going to be in 11th grade next year, and I go to Laguna Blanca. And I am reapplying for my second term as part of the Youth Council. I've been on Youth Council for four years now, two years as a junior member and two as a high school member. And I would just, I loved being part of my community, and I love helping out the youth that are here in Santa Barbara. And so some of my plans I would have... And so, some of my plans I would have is, I really want to do like a sports day and bring the youth together, because some of, it would be good for the younger, the younger kids in the community and also the high-schooler kids to meet and bond and be, hopefully some mentorships would build off of that. So, yeah.
Great. Well, and thank you for all your work.
Yeah. Any questions?
No, thank you, Ty.
All right, thank you.
Great. Well, who's next? Come on up.
Hello. Hello. Hi. My name is Nathaniel Gatacho. I'm 16-years-old. I go to Dos Pueblos High School currently. I'm a sophomore, will be a junior next year. So I've been a part of the Youth Council for four years. I started as a junior high member. I initially joined because I thought it was very important for the youth to have a voice in local government, seeing as we're such a big part of the population here, and also we are the future leaders of tomorrow, so it would make sense for us to be able to have a say in how tomorrow is shaped. During my time on the Youth Council, we've done many events addressing youth issues such as anti-bullying. We also had one addressing substance abuse in high school. During my time on the Youth Council, I've developed a lot of skills, such as people skills, public speaking. These were things I think I can bring to the table if I were to be reappointed to the Youth Council. And if I were to be reappointed, I would love to continue one of our projects. We call it Project Alma. It's a project where we seek to address immigrant youth's rights and hopefully bring that to the community in, with the hopes of blivening and improving their experience as youth in this community. I also think it would be better for the health of the council, seeing as I've been on it for so long. I think my experience can help better the council as a whole. So, any of you have any questions?
Great. No, thank you very much. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Vengas.
And you mentioned public speaking. You're an excellent public speaker. You speak better in public than I do and a lot of the other adults who are interviewing, so obviously the years on Youth Council are really doing you well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you.
You can bring that mic down. There you go. Yeah, there you go.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Anjali Thakrar, and I am a sophomore at Dos Pueblos High School. Now, in today's society, a big challenge that we face is connecting scientific facts to actual legislative policy. Now, this was shown in the Countrywide March for Science and Climate marches. Now, it's my goal to bring some of this to Santa Barbara. I know that there are many people in Santa Barbara who are actively engaged in this kind of advocacy, but I hope to bring the youth into it and for them to not only learn more about it, but to have a voice and participate. Now, I'm president of the National Art Honor Society at my school, and that's an organization that essentially, we give back to our community by means of art projects. So we have art drives, we paint murals, we just refurbish the school, and support the art community. And through this, I've learned just how, I've developed many leadership skills that I feel would be really useful on the Youth Council, and I've also learned how to write formal papers. Another thing that I can bring to the Youth Council is my experience in youth science education and in law, and I also have just very many ideas about how we can further involve the youth in just our community. Now, if I were appointed to the Youth Council, I would be able and more than willing to devote the necessary time to serve and complete extra work outside of the council. Now, I think it's a really valuable experience to be able to work with the Youth Council and work in conjunction with the City Council, and to just learn how everything works and how ideas are actually turned into physical things that happen. And I just, I think that's really interesting to see it and to experience it and to be able to interact with members of our community and have an impact. And I hope that by being on the Youth Council, I would be able to spread not only my ideas, but the ideas of our youth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great. Any questions? No? That was great.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and fellow city, or City Council members. My name is Kevin Akuna. I go to San Marcos High School, and next year I will be a junior. Or not junior, a senior. My bad. So, I am reapplying for the Youth Council, and why I am doing this is because I have a passion for helping the community, and in my Youth Council experience, I feel that I've gained a lot of skills to do so and improve my public speaking. I know I'm still a little awkward. Some of you might have remembered me from my first interview, but, and in that interview, or if not, I was really awkward and I was really shy, I could barely talk, but now I feel like I've really grown as a person, and the main source of that, I believe, was the Youth Council. During my Youth Council experience, I was part of projects such as the Anti-Bullying Project, and we fit our discussions regarding the legalization of marijuana and how that would affect our community. And in, also a part of the Youth Council, I took a position as a parliamentarian, which was responsible for keeping everyone in line, and I feel through this, I've gained a lot of experience, and perhaps that will help me if I am to be reappointed again. Like I said, I really have a passion for helping this community, and I would really like to see it thrive as, I've done a lot of volunteer work, and I think that the Youth Council could do a lot more improving, and I have a couple of ideas involving issues that we could further go into, such as the drug abuse of teenagers. I have a lot of people that I know who are affected, who are currently affected by that, and it's not something that I think should be a problem for our youth, as, that's not right. And I think we could also do some more work revolving around the issues of immigration. I feel that's a very socially relevant topic that needs to be addressed, as some people may not know what the issue is or how it should be solved, and I think that's a very important topic. I think that's kind of, and I, like I said, I really do love this Youth Council, and I feel that it's really changed me for the better as a person. And it's not only that, but it's important for the youths to have a voice so that their problems, such as the ones that I have ideas about, are listened to and solved.
Great. That was an excellent presentation, so congratulations and thank you for all your work. Thank you. Who's next? Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Milo Hensley. I go to Dos Pueblos High School. I'm 16-years-old, and next year I'll be a junior. I'd like to start off by mentioning some problems that I recognize in my own community, and then from there, move on to some solutions that I could contribute to as a member of the Youth Council. This is my first year applying, by the way. So some problems that I've seen are drug use among high school students, and food insecurity in Santa Barbara, and limited availability of ethnic studies courses, as well as trash on some Santa Barbara beaches. And as a member of the Youth Council, to address these issues, I would suggest fundraising for local after-school programs to give drug users alternative activities to do. Working together with Food Forward, which is a nonprofit organization that harvests like extra fruit left over that would have gone to waste during, at like private ranches and stuff, and I volunteered with them before, and they do great work. Recommend to the school board that all three ethnic studies courses, being Mexican-American literature, Chicano Studies, and social awareness, be available for, at all three high schools, which they're currently not. Right now, Dos Pueblos High School is the only one that offers all three. That's a part of the mission statement of Ethnic Studies Now, which is another organization that I've worked together with. Additionally, I've taken it upon myself to solve a problem that I've recognized in the community, which would be trash on our beaches. I started a club at our school, Santa Barbara Youth Environmentalists, three months ago, and so far, we've had four beach cleanups and one fundraising night at our local beaches, and the fundraising night was at DP. And that contributes to my experience with leadership and is part of the reason why I feel like I'm qualified to be a member of the Youth Council. So to wrap it up, basically, I'd like to be a member of the Santa Barbara Youth Council because it offers me a chance to address problems that I see in my community, take real action, and give myself a voice. I have lots of experience with leadership and hard work from my position as president of my middle school, the leadership in the environmental club that I already mentioned, and my hours volunteering with the Galita Historical Society, Food Forward, and Ethnic Studies Now. As a list of priorities, I intend to put the Youth Council second, only to school.
Good answer.
And we'll keep my schedule free whenever needed, so thank you very much for your consideration.
Great. Thank you very much. Great. Next.
Hi, everyone. Mayor and City Council. My name's Grant Bennett, and currently I attend Santa Barbara High School, where I'm a sophomore, so I'll be a junior next year. I, this is my first time applying for the U City Council, so as a member of Santa Barbara, newly member, actually, I just moved here about three years ago in eighth grade from Boise, Idaho, I'm very interested in learning more about this wonderful city where we have wonderful history, as well as environmental impacts that I could bring forward. I use lots of different aspects of Santa Barbara, our beaches, the mountains, as well as I play for our sports teams here at Santa Barbara High School, so using the outdoors and being a part of that kind of aspect of Santa Barbara is very important to me. So it would make sense for me to join the U City Council in order to bring more of an athletic perspective towards what we're going towards, to try and promote, helping keep our beaches clean, keep the trails safe. More of an aspect through that, as well, I'm interested in learning more about the local politics here in Santa Barbara, how things work, how people are represented in all of the different populations here, whether you're on the mesa, the west side, down near Milpiss, wherever you are, how different people are represented, as well as developing leadership skills. Currently, I'm in the MAD Academy down at Santa Barbara High School, which is the Media Arts and Design Academy, if you didn't know, where I'm on the MAD Leadership Committee, which is similar to ASB since we're not allowed to be in ASB due to the fact that we don't have an extra elective. But we've developed another class, which we get to involve ourselves with helping the MAD community and be in a leadership position. This semester and the previous semester, I was the president of our community service group, where I helped plan our MAD Mexico trip, going down to Tijuana, where we built houses for the needy families there who needed a safe place to stay with a lack of home and a lack of a safe environment for them to be. So I'm very familiar with community service. As well, I coached youth lacrosse for the SPLA. I'm a coach there, and I've coached all levels from Peewees, so second, first and second graders, all the way up to seventh and eighth graders. My fifth and sixth grade team actually won the championship just this last week, so I think I have a good role as a coach, knowing how to work with our youth, how to involve them and get them going and get them excited about doing something. I think I would do well on the Youth Council, being a leadership, in a leadership position already with our high school, as well as in a leadership position as a coach and just as a Santa Barbara resident and the youth here. I think it's important for me to have a voice and be able to express my opinion and help with the different aspects here, as well as learn more about the city, as I haven't had the chance to live here and learn too much about it. So it would be in my best interest to be on the, on the Youth Council to bring a different perspective coming from another state and give a different opinion from Santa Barbara High School, as some of the students here are from Laguna Blanca, DP, and San Marcos, so I know you guys are taking them all from different schools, but I think my opinion matters, and I think that being heard is important and having leadership skills and learning more about the Youth Council and the City Council, and just how our government works and how I can give back to our community is important.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Any questions?
No.
Thank you. Who's next? Come on up. Welcome. Hi there.
Hi, I'm Mayor Schneider and members of the City Council. My name is Jensen Steady. I have served on the Santa Barbara Youth Council for the last two years, so I'm reapplying for my second term now. I feel like we have accomplished a lot in the last two years. I'm very happy with a lot of the events we've put on, a lot of the stuff we've done with teenagers within our community, but I also do feel like there's a lot more work that we can do. I'm going to be a senior next year. I'm currently a junior at Santa Barbara High School, so I'm going to be senior next year, and I feel very confident that I can put my skills that I've already gained from the Youth Council and put them to good use in my last year. So I currently attend Santa Barbara High School. I'm in the Multimedia Arts and Design Academy, as well as the Computer Science Academy. I intern with an organization that we're helping to fundraise to provide prosthetic legs for those in need, especially in Africa. I am also working with clubs on campus, doing lots of extracurricular stuff like that. A project that would be, a project that I am really passionate about, and that's, I think, something that we should bring up as a Youth Council, something we can do locally especially, is really just our overall campus kind of cleanliness. I think, at least for me, at Santa Barbara High School, often the bathrooms, the overall just littering, trash, everything, that whole campus feel, I really don't like it. I think there's a lot that can be done, especially by teenagers, that we can really, you know, lobby like the administration and get them to know that we don't really, we don't really approve of this, and I think there's a lot more that can be done in that regard, and that's something I think I will especially be focusing on as we go into the new year. Also, I will be attending Boys State this summer, which I just thought I should mention that. It's a program put on by the American Legion where I think, I think it's like 1,000, 1,000 male juniors from California will be gathering together in Sacramento, and it's basically like a workshop thing. I'm not sure if you guys know about it or not, but it's like a workshop thing where we are taught about government and the whole real system. We get to run for like positions, so to speak. There's like mayors, all that kind of stuff, and we get to really participate in what government is really like. And I think that perspective and the experience I'm going to gain from that, I'll be going, it's like mid-June, so in a couple of weeks, actually. So I think that perspective, that experience I gain this summer, along with all of the other community service I've done, I've also participated in going to Mexico, building houses. I volunteered at Notes for Notes, which is a music organization, and the Boys and Girls Club. I think all of my community service, combined with my past two years of experience, also combined with this experience I'm going to get this summer, I feel very confident that I can really do a lot in my last year, my last year as a high-schooler and as a teenager here in Santa Barbara. I feel confident that the, that the Youth Council can accomplish a lot. I'm really looking forward to it and hoping that you will give me the opportunity to really, to really provide and make, and really help the youth in our community and help other teenagers.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your service. Come on up. No, no, good, good. It's all right. Y'all get a chance.
Hello, my name's Lexi Andrews Reyes. You might see my name as Alexis. I go by Lexi, though. I have lived in Santa Barbara my whole life and currently attend Laguna Blanca as a sophomore. I have, haven't been involved in lots of volunteering committees, but I consistently volunteer at the Unity Shop and am eager to be a part of our community. And I think I, what I would bring to the table is my energy, my eagerness to learn, and I can, I'm a very good negotiator, so I can bring our ideas and make it happen. I'm a go-getter. I would love, yeah, so I would love to be a part, and I think what I would bring to the Youth Council would make an improvement, and thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Ellie Channawith. I am a sophomore at Santa Barbara High School, and I am a fourth-generation Santa Barbara, and I've lived here all my life, and I feel very lucky to live in Santa Barbara. I'm also part of the MAD Academy at Santa Barbara High School and a part of MAD Leadership, so we develop our leadership skills. And I was part of the Mexico Community Service Group as well, going down to help build houses for those in need. And MAD Leadership is a newer program at our school, and we are working to develop it, and I look forward to learning or developing my leadership skills. I am interested in becoming a member of Youth Council to develop my leadership skills not only within our school, but also in the community. I've enjoyed being a part of NCL and volunteering with the community with a variety of organizations, such as Peer Buddies, the Dream Foundation, Teddy Bear Cancer Foundation, and other organizations as well. I am a motivated teen. I am very committed. I play on a travel volleyball team and have also developed leadership skills through being a captain of my team, as well as a captain on the JV team as a freshman at Santa Barbara High School. Yeah, I am very aware of worldly issues as well as our issues in the community. I watch the news every morning, so I'm familiar with certain issues such as, such as desolization, our household issues right now, resident. And, yeah, and also, yeah, so thank you. Are there any questions?
Yep, any questions? Did you say volleyball?
Yeah. I play for a volleyball team here at SPBC.
Thank you very much. Come on up.
Hi, Ms. Mayor and the council members. My name is Julie Stone and I am 16 years old. I attend Laguna Blanca. I'm able to devote the time necessary to serve if I'm appointed, as I'm always free on Mondays. I have held many leadership roles in clubs such as the Dream Foundation at Laguna Blanca and I've also been on the Laguna Blanca Student Council for the last four years. I'm very passionate about volunteering in the community and I volunteered at Safety Town as a CIT advisor and at the Transition House Infant Care Center for the past four years. And also on the Youth Making Change Grant Giving Board. I did that this last year. It was a great experience. I want to have the opportunity to participate in a direct relationship and conversation with Santa Barbara City Council as this position. Seems like it, it does. I want to collaborate with my peers and learn the processes and the systems of local government so that I can make changes in my community. I would love to have an influential role in the decision-making of my community and to start to participate in the local government of Santa Barbara, as I am an aspiring public policy advocate. I feel as if there are certain issues in Santa Barbara that could be affected through this role, such as the situation of homelessness in Santa Barbara as it relates to children and teens, and also the issue of the undocumented community, as well as pollution on our beaches, as has been said by other members that have come up here and spoken, and climate change as it affects Santa Barbara, as that is in our future. So I would like to be a voice for those who are not able to speak for themselves, to summarize. So, thank you. I really appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Any questions? Nope.
Yep. Thanks. Okay, thank you.
One more, right? All right, come on up. Welcome.
My name is Christine Creo. I'm in eighth grade at Loughlin at Junior High. Next year I'll be attending San Marcos High School. I first heard about the Youth Council through my sister, who was also on it, and by being and by serving as a junior high representative for the past two years. I'm interested in joining the Santa Barbara Youth Council because it gives a voice to the youth and to be more involved in the community. I believe it's very important for the teens to be involved because they're going to the future leaders someday very soon. I believe I'll be a good candidate for the Youth Council because I'm go-time and working in groups and love to volunteer in the community. I have a strong investment in ballet, tutoring, babysitting, and working at my aunt's with the people office and of course, school. Next year I'll also be part of San Marcos's Apple Accelerated Academic Program for Leadership and Enrichment. On Mondays, my schedule is open for Youth Council meetings. If you elected me as a member, I would be very grateful and work my hardest to make sure the Youth Council continues to thrive and to get the youth, the youth's voices heard.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Madam Mayor, so you're the junior high school representative now, so you're already active. Okay, super. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Is that everybody? That was really impressive. We have some hard decision-making in a couple of weeks, so thank you all very much. And with that, I believe we are adjourned. Thank you all.